Okay, I'd like to call the regular schedule, meeting of Mayor and Council for Monday, October sixth. Order, yes, everyone, please rise.
Our pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, by the United States of America and to remember what forces stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first on the agenda is the minutes approval, which is before us in printed form. Moved by Mr. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Chads, approve the minutes before us in printed form. Any questions on the motion? There are none. All in favor signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is the treasures report, again, before us in printed form. Moved by Mr. Chads, seconded by Mr. Moore, that we approve the treasures report before us in printed form. Questions on the motion? There are none. All in favor signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next on the agenda is the bills payable, which this month totaled three million, two hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred thirty dollars and fifty-five cents.
Make motion pay bills as points become available?
Second. Moved by Mr. Chads, seconded by Mr. Blake, the bills as points become available. Questions on the motion? There are none. All in favor signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next on the agenda is the police report, Chief Tex.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, good evening, citizens of Middletown, this is the police report for October. During the month of September, we responded to approximately one thousand, two hundred ninety calls for service. Quick recap of some significant events. We did have some thefts from the murder vehicles again through the middle period of August. During early morning hours, people had gone through unsecured vehicles. One was ran a sack, one had small amount of property taken, just again, please reminder, please lock your doors. Ah, burglary, village brook. The victim reported that an unknown suspect entered the residence via unsecured door. And approximately two thousand dollars worth of equipment was taken. Nothing significant, ever in three and four districts. Again, just thefts from murder vehicles, just a quick highlight of that. On the fourth, on early morning hours, Middletown officers observed a suspicious vehicle attempting to enter vehicles. As they also approached the individual, she fled on foot. And then entered a waiting Chevy Traverse. The vehicle fled the area at a high rate of speed. The Traverse split a dollar temp tag, that was reported stolen. The investigation conducted by the patrol division led to the arrest of two juvenile females on August ninth. And September ninth, this should be. Both juveniles were charged with burglary, third, conspiracy, second, theft, and disregarding a police signal. And they were issued six thousand dollars security bond. It's a great job by the uniform patrol division. We had two hundred sixty-four traffic sentences, two DUIs, ninety-five criminal arrests, twenty-six felony arrests, fifty-seven misdemeanor. Twelve violations, a hundred fifteen warnings, two hundred thirty-nine reports, and two hundred sixty-eight FSR reports written for the month. Just a quick breakout of them, one, one district again, leads again with a hundred and forty answers. Ninety-six over in two districts, and seventy-two and forty-one, three and four. Just a quick recap of support services for the month. We had various meetings with SN4C, who's a sponsor of our CPA and our youth academy. We hit up on with the COP program, which I should mention that Officer Curtis Howard did that on his own, put that together. So, great job, great turnout. Really proud of him to go out on his own and engage with kids in the community. We had some back-to-school nights and a couple other activities with the school district as it was beginning of the school year. And we had a Patriot Day celebration over at the Middletown High School, and just a couple of photos. Again, this is come and gone. We had donations, so thank you for anybody that helped us with our back-to-school future drive last month, we do appreciate that. There's some pictures of the Cubists and Quibble West participating over there at the bowling alley, I'm not sure who won that night. And then again, Patriot Day celebration, great, great program put together by this high school. Again, please slow down, as you can see, we're still out there dealing with traffic issues. We appreciate everybody's attentiveness to the speed limit and stop signs. Those help make a difference. And then again, we had seventy crashes per month, and you can see as usual, driver intention of distraction, unfortunately, is the normal cause of that. And that concludes the police report.
Go back to the speed page.
Yes, sir.
We had a seventy mile an hour in Clearwater Farm Road, and a thirty-three, and a fifty on Cochran Street?
That's the high speed, so that's, that is a significant, yeah. The average speed is, the average speed is, is good news, is, is lower on some of the streets, but yeah, there, unfortunately, occasionally, we do have high-speed vehicles on this road.
Okay. Okay. I want to entertain the motion to accept Chief Tex's police report.
So?
Moved by Mr. Thomas, seconded by Mr. Blake. Questions on the motion? There are none. All in favor signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Next on the agenda is the Middletown Main Street update, Kate Brokaw.
Good evening. Last month, we had the Ladybug Music Festival, so I want to thank you all for your help in making that happen. It was great to bring a lot of music to the community. And this Thursday, we are having our course, Charcuterie Club on Main Street. We only have nine tickets available, so there are still a few tickets if anyone's interested. It's a great opportunity. Six courses, wine and beer, these things. You go into some of the stores, they're offering specials. And it's a great week, so if you see a hundred and fifty people downtown Thursday night, that's why. That's what we have happening.
Cool, good. I want to entertain the motion to accept the version of the Main Street update from Kate Brokaw. Moved by Mr. Thomas, seconded by Mr. Chads. Questions on the motion? There are none. All in favor signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Kate. Next on the agenda is the public hearings portion of our agenda. And the first is the Living Lab Project update from the, from the University of Delaware.
Good evening, and thank you for having us with you here tonight. My name is Matt Harris, I work with the University of Delaware in the Living Labs program in the Biden School of Public Policy. And that's in their Institute for Public Administration. I'm here tonight to give a little bit of background, and then my colleague Paul from Del dot is going to walk you guys through some data. That has to do with some improvements, a little bit of an experiment that we tried here in Middletown. So, who we are, you know, we are a University of Delaware research collaborative supported by the Delaware Department of Transportation. Paul, designed to assist Delaware communities in planning, implementing, evaluating active transportation pop-up demonstrations. For you, for those of you who are familiar with like the downtown, we just did a pop-up demonstration on Cochran Street. Sort of like the blocks that are right around the YMCA, the library, and Silver Lake Elementary School. So, this is our team, Paul and I are here with you tonight, Alex is in the audience. We also have a couple of professors and my colleague Colin. We all work at the University of Delaware, well, with the exception of Paul who works at Middletown. So, what do we do? The Living Labs used to assist Delaware local governments, community-based organizations, and school districts in planning, executing, and evaluating active transportation pop-up demonstrations. Additionally, what brought us here to Middletown was a local government request. We were asked to look at this street from your town leadership. So, these pop-ups include traffic calming, placemaking, open streets, safe routes to school, and activity from these spaces. So, it could be any of those. So, why did we do this project? I just gave you a little background right now. You know, the town of Middletown asked us to take a closer looking Cochran Street. Speeding has become a concern, there's a lot of potential. And there is also pedestrian movement that happens along that street with the library, the kids, and the YMCA, and the school. So, you know, with heavy foot traffic occurring between Silver Lake Elementary, the library, and the Y, you know, coming here helps everyone. Especially students feel safer and more comfortable getting around. So, that was like the goal of why we did what we did. So, where's our process of like? You know, we start with a plan or an idea. Here, we started with, you know, a request from Middletown Council. We introduce it to the public, I'm going to tell you a little bit about how we did that. We're going to coordinate with stakeholders, we develop ideas based upon feedback. And then we install the interim installation and gather feedback during the demonstration period. That's essentially what we're doing now, the demonstration has been put out. And then we come back, we share feedback with the project, with the stakeholders in the community, you know. We want to study how people react to these things, how they welcome them into their community, what the challenges are, and what is really like exciting for people. And they can see implemented in other spaces where they live. So, here's our Middletown project, we're on East Cochran Street. And the challenges and opportunities were speed reduction, crossing safety, and placemaking. And it's kind of hard to see here, but we really focused on the core that was right from, I guess, Catherine up to about the YMCA. You know, thinking that that was the place where most pedestrian movement was happening, and most cars were moving, because you have the school, you have the Y. There's just a lot of movements that happened up there, there's an development, so there's just a lot going on. So, the stakeholders, you know, it was the Silver Lake Elementary School, crossing guards, it was one. The YMCA, the library, residents, and anyone who utilizes the corridor. So, that last one kind of speaks to everybody that would be coming to and from. You know, not just everybody that lives or maybe utilizes those institutions right there. So, outreach, what do we do? So, our outreach events, we did the Middletown Public Library, we went and spent a few hours there. A lot of their children, I believe they have story time, is what they call it. So, we hung out in the lobby there and introduced ourselves to the people coming and going, and anyone else that came to the library. We also went to the Middletown Farmer's Market, which was quite nice. And that was on May twenty-eighth, we spent the afternoon there, we had our table, we had a map, we were talking to people, you know, gathering information. You know, we had an official survey, but really, honestly, a lot of our feedback came just from casual conversations with like people like you. You know, just telling us what their concerns were and what they valued about their community. So, and then we also did a Silver Lake Back to School night, because we wanted to kind of like hear what families, with the most vulnerable users, right, the kids, are thinking of the improvements. And my colleague, Alex and I sat off under the school, we talked to people, showed them the improvements. You know, some people, obviously, it's hard to reach everyone, some people are like, wow, we didn't even realize where that came from. So, just kind of meet people where they're at and explain the process from there. I have to say, a lot of people were, were quite happy with it, and thought it was an add to the community. So, the common themes that people told us were, and I will say outright that we didn't accomplish all of these. You know, like, these are what people told us, and we can accomplish like a smaller bucket of it. So, additional crosswalks, lots of traffic in moving vehicles with the school, the traffic moves at what feels an unsafe speed. I think that that's probably the one that we honed in most on. Traffic utilizes the library area as a cut through. You know, this was a bit, I don't know if I want to say controversial, but it was a bit of a surprise to people. And then there also is not much tree canopy. Obviously, that's something that we can solve in Living Labs over like a six-month period. However, it's something to think about, and there are trees out there, you know, it just takes time. So, funding for pop-up materials project, Paul, I'm going to hand it over to Paul now, he's going to walk me through the next slides.
Hey, everyone, Paul Moser, I'm an engineer with the Delaware Department of Transportation, active transportation and community connections. And Matt, these are active transportation, that kind of means people biking, walking, using scooters. Really, I think it's not a car for the most part, all the work. So, that's where that section comes from, and what Matt is referencing. So, the funding for this, the traffic calm materials, which are like the rubber things that are on the street, Cochran also shows some pictures in a moment. Including modular speed cushions. Those were five thousand dollars for the entire thing, nine thousand, five thousand dollars for the modular curbs. I used to set up the chicanes, again, show pictures, so a total of fourteen thousand dollars spent from our side. That money was provided to us through the Delaware Pest Street Council. They were looking for projects that were going to make an impact for people's lives around the state. And rather than spend it on flyers and giveaways, stuff like a lot of the state councils spend money on. They wanted to do it on a project that was going to hit the ground quickly. So, we were, well, not with that. The town spent about just under nine thousand dollars for planters, plants, tools, as well as traffic control devices for the duration of that event. The design for this whole layout was done by myself and some other folks at Del dot. The outreach was done by Living Labs, and the installation was done by public works staff. So, as far as just outright factors and expenditures for the whole thing, it comes out to about, total, what is that? It was good, man. Let's call it twenty-three thousand dollars. Not including, again, the hours for the, the public center staff. So, the things put in, these are the speed cushions I was just mentioning. Basically, they are a type of speed hump that can be installed with a hammer drill and some epoxy. They are designed with those slots in the middle for wider wheelbase emergency response vehicles to really go through them without going over the bumps. However, not all emergency vehicles actually have that wider axle width, the same axle width. It also is helpful for drainage, and if your people are riding scooters or biking, they can go right through it. They're three inches tall, which is not very tall, and they're designed to be a slightly lighter touch intervention than traditional speed bumps that you might find in like the parking lot of an RB's that release, like your suspension. They are, they work, but they're a little bit more tentative. Next slide, please. And then this is, these are what are called chicanes, essentially, they're horizontal deflections, sort of the term that we use. They basically create a, an extension of the curb. That drivers would usually deviate their drive path a little bit to go around them. That tends to have a traffic calming effect where people slow down a little bit when they approach them. There's still, it's a total of a twenty-six foot wide road, and there's still twenty foot, or only six foot from the existing curb line. Which is plenty wide for two cars to pass each other, in fact, but a lot of people still tend to sometimes wait and let other vehicles pass. It really kind of narrows the roadway, and it makes people perk up and pay a little bit more attention to what's going on. And that tends to have a traffic calming effect and like a speed reducing effect. And then the extra space is used for those flower pots, as you can see there. Next, please. Yeah, public grading, placemaking, we like that, like Matt was saying. We're not able to really add tree canopy or something really like the shade in the corridor, but it's kind of a bit of a sing-along for that. And if you guys were to do a formal, full, you know, project with concrete in the future, you could also account for plenty of areas of plenty of boxes for trees, if that makes sense. Excellent, please. So, this is really what I'm interested to talk about, the speed, the effect of this. So, this right here is data that was collected by the police department before we did this. It's a bit hard to see, but basically, the average speed on this road was twenty-five, almost twenty-six miles per hour. And you say, okay, cool, it's a twenty-five mile an hour road, we're glad the average speed is twenty-five. That means fifty percent of the people driving are going over twenty-five miles per hour. So, we like to look at the percentile speeds a lot of the time. And the eighty-fifth percentile speed is traditionally, it's been used to set speed limits in America. So, the eighty-fifth percentile means eighty-five percent and less people are driving under thirty-two mile, under thirty-one miles an hour. Which is pretty fast, right? That still means there's fifteen percent of people driving that are going over thirty-one miles an hour. And top score was sixty-four miles per hour in that collection window. So, this was in November, I think, of twenty-twenty-four. Next slide, please. So, really, I want to draw attention to you guys here is that section there on the right side of the orange arrows. So, again, it's easy to say, oh, it's a twenty-five mile per hour road, that's fine, it's not a problem, no one's going to die there. It's, it's a local road, right? However, if someone is hit walking by a car, the effect and the risk of fatality or serious injury increases exponentially with the speed of the car, right? So, if you get hit going twenty miles an hour, the chance of you dying is ten percent, right? You're probably going to walk away with an injury unless you're older or the circumstances are pretty bad. As you get to thirty miles an hour, that risk quadruples. When you get to forty miles an hour, chances are you're not going to walk away from that accident. So, everyone to the right of that orange arrow on that histogram was driving over forty miles an hour, which is pretty much a fatality speed on that road. So, when people say, oh, the cars are going too fast, it feels unsafe, they're right. Not everyone, right? Most people are going at a reasonable pace, however, there is still that tail end where there's a really high risk of serious injury occurring. So, we, when I think of these projects, I work with Matt on these, and we're doing traffic calming, that's what we're trying to address, is that tail end effect. And usually, that's the best you can do with traffic calming, but the results for this project are way as standing. And that, by the way, accounts to about ten people a day in that speed range, right? And you see the people in the blue, that's the vast majority are going over twenty-five, but that's the real risky section of the travel problem. Next, please. So, the project had a pretty remarkable effect by most traffic calming installations that I've seen this day at Delaware and been a part of. So, it reduced the average speed from twenty-five to eighteen miles an hour, essentially. So, average speeds are below twenty-five now, the eighth percentile speed is twenty-two, which is, it's now effectively a twenty-five mile an hour road, right? And we got the top speed down to forty-three miles per hour, which I just saw, and your presentation was beaten again by someone going fifty. However, as ridiculous as that speed is, you saw how many people before were in that above forty mile an hour range. That is now the high end, that is the tail of our dataset, which is an incredible success at reducing the potential injury and serious fatality in this road. And changing the field and perception of safety that people have while they're walking on this road or driving on it too. Next slide, please. So, again, that's kind of the two histograms look. Again, this is maybe a bit, I've looked at this enough times, so it makes sense to me, this might be a lot for you all, but I want to put this on the record to show this data. It is quite remarkable how we've been able to get speeds within the actual target speed limit of this roadway. And personally, I think it is because of the combination of factors. It's the speed cushions and the horizontal deflection of those chicanes. I think make a big difference in combination to really get people's attention to slow down and change the driving behavior on that road. Rather than being just a wide-open strip of asphalt that you can rip it, they now have to actually slow down and think a little bit and interact with the people driving next to them. So, next slide. We got this a lot, I'm sure, maybe you guys saw, I heard that we actually got the number one post in social media history in the town of Middletown with this one. If you guys saw that one, three hundred and eighty-something comments. I'd have to censor myself if I was saying some of the stuff that was on there, but it was interesting. Actually, just to check it out sometime, there were some, there's a lot of, a lot of good comments, but a lot that were just kind of irate. Big theme here a lot, excuse me, is why don't you just have cops go out there? Then we'll solve the problem, just have the police got there and enforce it, and that will solve the problem. So, I've never actually done this experiment. Chief Texter gave us some numbers for the overtime cost of enforcement. And for the fourteen thousand dollars that we spent just on the rubber materials we saw out there, you'd get about a hundred and eighty hours of police overtime enforcement for traffic violations, which equates to about forty-six four-hour shifts. So, you'd have a cop there forty-six times. So, on the other, other hand, I think these devices are effective twenty-four seven. They're not waiting and anticipating a cop to be there, and if he's not there, they're just going to resume their behavior. These have a full-time traffic calming and speed reduction effect. Working in roadway construction, these prices are remarkably affordable. I know you guys probably don't see the big costs we get every day here at Del dot, but fourteen thousand dollars, that's a lot of effect for a small amount of money, in my opinion. And also, there's much higher priority traffic enforcement locations, I'm sure. Even though it is good to have traffic enforcement local roads, we have a lot of kids and activity going on nearby. Two ninety-nine, and I'm sure you could boost up the roads that are higher priority. So, we're able to take some of that burden of enforcement off of this local road to allow the police to focus on higher priority, perhaps higher-risk areas. Next slide, please. And I just wanted to say, sort of in conclusion, a big thank you to the town of Middletown staff for being a part of this. I, I know you guys are here to hold them accountable, but they have been one of the most efficient teams that I've worked with in a long time with this. They're very professional, very interested in moving the project along, have a fantastic kind of get-her-done attitude that I really appreciate. So, just a couple people that were instrumental in making this happen, I want to say thank you all. We've had a great time working on this project, and we hope it was beneficial for you all as well.
Great. Well, thank you, I, I think it has been beneficial. You know, most of the comments we've backed, we've gotten back have been total support, especially, you know, from the school district. And you mentioned the planners that were there, the comment that you made early in the presentation was a cut through and speeding and everything there from the library. That's why we put those planners there, to stop that cutting through. So, the library appreciates that, the comments, talking to the county executives. So, with that, we'll open it up, any questions? I know, I got a letter from Robin Renee. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Robin Renee.
Okay, you wanted, questions that you mentioned or?
I actually have something I'd like to repeat, I guess, that would be better. Is this the little one, or should I come up?
No, that's fine, just.
Okay. All right, so, sorry, here with me. I'm writing to express my deep concern regarding the speed humps risk recently installed along Cochran Street as part of what I understand to be a University of Delaware pilot program. While I recognize and appreciate the intent to improve pedestrian and community safety, the placement of these planks directly in front of my home has created a significant and ongoing disruption. As a neurodivergent resident, the constant noise from the vehicles driving over the planks, beginning as early as four-thirty a.m. due to YMCA traffic, is highly distressing. Each impact reverberates through my home, waking me repeatedly and disrupting both rest and concentration. This disturbance has had a marked effect on my well-being and my professional productivity as a researcher and a professor whose work requires quiet and focus. I write not only as a resident, but as someone with policy experience. I've previously served as a policy fellow for the Philadelphia City Council, and am currently a PhD candidate in education policy at the University of Pittsburgh. Through that work, I have developed a strong understanding of policy design, community engagement, and evidence-based implementation. From that perspective, I am particularly concerned that I was not consulted prior to the installation of these planks. University-led pilot programs typically involve surveys or other outreach to ensure community participation in the decision-making process. I am unaware that such steps involved my input. The planks span the entire length of my property from my front door to my window, making my home the most direct and negatively impacted on Cochran Street. I reflect, I respectfully besieged the council to remove or relocate those planks or to consider a quieter, community-friendly alternative, such as a large flower pot or planters, which can serve as equally effective traffic calming measures without generating noise pollution. I appreciate your time, attention, and ongoing commitment to ensuring that safety initiatives are implemented in ways that also protect residents' wellbeings and accessibility. Thank you.
Just a couple concerns, the issues you raised.
Yes, sir.
We had three public meetings. We had three public meetings here, and they were advertised on our website. Um, so for anybody that was not aware of it, it was because it just didn't look or whatever. We also did surveys, and as you see, this is just a study to say what we might want to do going forward. Nothing about this was permanent or whatever. That's why we're having them here tonight to get community input. We also met with the Little League, we met with the school district, and we met with the library to see what their concerns were on the speeding out there along Cocklin Street. So it wasn't like we didn't do homework or go to, we didn't go door to door, but obviously we did do studies, um, and did assessments on, just try to calm the traffic in that area. So just, you know, there were several outreaches to be able to address before any implementation or anything was done. And we did go to Delta and the University of Delaware. The one picture that's still up there now is our public works, where we went out there, the chief brought the biggest truck that would, um, or the, the bumps, and we actually did a demo to make sure that it would be okay, noise and everything around that. So it wouldn't, I don't want you to think that we just said, willy-nilly, just go out there and see how many people we can upset. But we know that's a problem, and this is really nothing around that going to be permanent or whatever. It was just a study that we did, and you can see the results of that study, just on the calming and the, um, speed on the street. So that's really what it was, it was a study. I'm sorry, I mean, if, if it's been bothering you as long as it's out there, you sent me a letter today. If you'd have sent me a letter in the beginning, we'd have been able to address it when they went out there. So, um, and I made sure that Todd contacted you today to let you know you'd have an opportunity to speak tonight, so.
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted, you know, we didn't do this.
No, 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 I'm not saying that at all. I'm just, I'm in the middle of dissertation and, and as these researchers would know, that, that is, that means it's a lot of time that I'm studying and working and writing.
Sure, no, I understand.
I'm not able to come out as often as I would like to, but this is certainly showing me that I need to come out here. So I appreciate your time and I hope that you.
When you get your PhD, maybe I'll come over and you can give me a little.
Well, I am in need of a, of a unpaid internship in policy, so. We will talk.
All right, that's all right, I'm glad you did that.
All right, thank you. I would add one thing too, um, if you guys do pursue a permanent project, and those would be either concrete or asphalt speed cushions.
Right, that's what we've been doing that.
Those are going to be quieter. Um, one thing we could do is look and ask the manufacturer if they have any suggestions of how to dampen the noise. I have no idea if that would actually, if there's anything they could do at that point. Um, but with a full, like, actual long-term project, um, a lot of that noise would be abated.
Yeah, we've looked, we've looked at it, we've got prices on doing, um, asphalt and Luitties, but we wanted to do a study to see if these fit and actually work. So we've gotten prices on doing permanent ones, which are quiet. Um, again, it's not, just, just so you know that, we, uh.
Well, that could be a project I could, I could work with.
No, no, you're already complaining, you complained, so yeah. If you, if you complained, then you would get an option.
Oh, no.
We have enough people to complain and that's kick every month, so yeah. Um, no, no, no problem at all, so, yeah, we'll work on something going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you certainly know where I live, 'cause I live right in front of.
Yeah, I got your address here, it's in my phone, yeah.
Thank you.
At one twenty, three twenty-seven East Conference Street.
Yes, three twenty-seven, everyone, thank you.
It's the one down on the left. Any other questions or comments?
You alluded a bit to the what's next, can you allow me to do that?
You wanna get the mic and answer so I can get it on the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, there's nothing to be sorry about.
You started to allude to what might be next, is there anything else you can add to that?
We're gonna take the, yeah, we're gonna take the information from them, and the process is that we've gotten prices on doing, um, uh, blacktop ones that would be similar to this, but it'd be permanent and be much quieter. Uh, but we wanted to do a study first with these, knowing, um, that we had the option to go there and do that going forward. So we've targeted some other areas in town, this was a number one priority because of all the kids and the traffic in the area, and we wanted to do it while that was going on. So Little League was in full effect, so we did the study with that going on, of course, the library's busy all the time. So we're looking at this work, the speed bumps worked, so now we're gonna talk about, um, what we want to do for a path forward. Probably be something permanent, and then we're looking at other streets also where we know we have major concern.
Back up to my second question, so thank you for adding that.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
And how long is the study for?
Six years. It's over, the study's over, I'm just kidding. We work, we work with the University of Delaware, so we'll sit down with them again to talk about where we are going forward. Um, we anticipate being able to do something if we go forward with this, to put something in permanent there. They will do that before the winter, and then we'll move on to other areas, um, of concern. Any other questions, comments? I would have been surprised.
Hi, I'm with you. Um, first of all, and, and the young lady is talking about that, I just want to say I've been here for sixteen years before that was a road, and then it turned into a Y and stuff like that. Once it turned into the Y, the sound before those buildings were built and the sound of those, the cars and the things before the, um, bumps, that would keep you up at night, um, the trucks, the cars, just jamming down that road. Um, I know I talked a lot about, he's telling me about people who complained, but, but I run, I do a lot in that area. I'm from Cummins, uh, Middletown Crossing, I'm in that area, I was just there this morning doing six miles worth of run in the general area. It has saved that area, saved that area. The kids, I mean, it's an elementary school, you would know before those bumps were up, the speed from, from the start of Cocklin Catherine down there was insane. I mean, I almost got taken out, I'm talking to the, to the council many times, you know, got taken off four times, four times in a crosswalk. So the bumps, I don't know, but the sound, 'cause I live just a little bit past you, uh, in the Cummins Crossing area, but it has actually reduced, um, the sound of all the cars coming. And there's five thousand cars a day coming, if you do the math, and we've done it, my wife and I worked on it, there's five thousand cars a day just coming. Without those, what would this, what would this sound be? Now, I'm not going after you, I'm just saying, the sound without that would be immense. So the, you got, it, it has shaved it down quite a bit. I, I, I thank you and I thank you for doing it, I think it has saved quite a bit, I think it's saved some people too. I've seen some kids come out there, and it's really slowed people down. I mean, again, it's an elementary school, those kids go everywhere. So overall, I said, is it perfect? I think that'll be up to you to, you know, figure out the perfect piece of it, but I think it's, it's, it's one of the best things that we've done in that area.
Yeah, but it is something that we're thinking of looking at, and I understand exactly what you're talking about. I bike out there, I don't sit there and, I haven't heard the noise or whatever, but obviously it's something disturbing, especially middle night, whatever. Um, and I do know that if somebody's late for a, a, um, a speed class at the Y, if they're two minutes late, they'd rather pay a traffic fine than, than be late for the course. Um, so, um, we take, take the heart from what you said, and we'll work on that, so. Anybody else, any questions? And your wife was just beaming when you stood up and made those comments. Okay, um, we'll get with you, path forward, thank you guys, appreciate it, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is forty-nine ninety-one Summer Bridge Road. It's a concept plan for development of two retail buildings. Building number one comprises seventeen thousand five hundred square feet, and building two comprises sixty-five hundred square feet, for a total combined retail square footage of twenty-four thousand square feet in a C-three zoning area. And this is concept plan, yes, sir?
Good evening, my name is Dennis Hume, the Woodland Associates, the civil engineer for this project. Uh, this property is located on Summer Bridge Road at the intersection of Mall Fifth Road on the northeast corner, diagonal from the existing Wawa. Uh, and this is a concept plan, uh, simple plan, just for two retail buildings, one larger one, one smaller one. Um, the larger one is about seventeen thousand five hundred square feet, and it consists of multi-tenants. Uh, the smaller one in front, uh, could be, uh, multi-tenants or just the same tenant with a restaurant or a bank. There's, uh, two existing entrances that we plan to utilize and improve with right turn lanes. Um, we plan to extend the sewer, uh, service to the property from the south, and water, uh, service is already at the intersection there. We have a long sales form for management, and, uh, when we come before you next time, we'll have a more detailed plan and building elevations for you to share.
Okay, concept plan, um, so, um, opened up the questions from anyone, um, from council? And they've opened up the public for comments or questions on the parcel. Um, if anybody's not familiar with it, it's the parcel caddy corner from the Wawa at Armstrong's Corner. Um, it's a lot right next to the Crab Dog, um, right there on the corner, so. Questions from anyone, council, questions?
Just a couple, Dennis, on, on, um, the Sun Bridge, is that a left-hand opportunity as well, or is that right out?
They're, they're both right in, right out, 'cause they're the existing medians on, uh, river, when, uh, when Sun Bridge Road was approved several years ago.
I know there was a discussion to have in Morris regarding soils here, and we've explored soil study, uh, we have, uh, that got sent over to that.
Yeah, that was all done, uh, a year or two ago when the property was annexed in, um, phase two.
Really phase two, not phase one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the more involved.
More detailed, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's all been submitted, yes. We can include it again with any statement you have.
That is right, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions, council?
Along, same lines from the Mall Fifth Road, if there are also, uh, will you be able to east, or is it right in, right out as well?
It's also right in, right out, so if you exit there, you'll be able to get to the intersection and head north or south. Um, if you, if you exit the other one, you'll be able to head north, you know, to, to.
So anybody who would want to go east there, do you have to, you turn and go all the way around?
Yeah, unfortunately, uh, that's the way Dela operates, I think it turns into.
Yeah.
Where's that cement, so there's that cement burn there, if you're trying to make a left off of it?
Yeah, there's media, there's, there's a big media that said, I don't anticipate, uh, Dela, um, allowing lefts out. It's, it's possible they could, but we'll, we have a meeting coming up in, uh, next week with them, so we'll have more information at the next meeting.
Okay, questions from anyone? Yes, ma'am?
Is this the parcel by the railroad tracks or across the street?
Before you, if they cross the railroad, it's on the left side. If you're coming from, um, Wawa.
Okay, when you cross the railroad tracks?
No, it's before you get, before you get to it, on the left, yep. That parcel right there, before the railroad tracks, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, thanks then.
Thank you.
Okay. Mister Mitchell, how are you? Couldn't, couldn't see, couldn't see or something, it's good. Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, ten thirty-five Industrial Drive. It's a concept plan for seven one-story buildings in a flex space use, building three hundred and fifteen thousand square foot of gross floor area with associated site improvements to be constructed on forty-two point three-three plus or minus acres in an MI zone. Yes, sir?
Good evening, uh, name's Steve Wood, I'm with Apex Engineering, the site engineer for this project. Um, this is forty-two point three acres, uh, tucked back on Industrial Drive, not very highly trafficked, trafficked in this area. Um, this, uh, it's, it is owned MI, uh, again, it's three hundred and fifteen thousand square feet, uh, separate across seven buildings. Um, six of those are fifty thousand, uh, with proposal up to, uh, potential for six tenants in each, uh, each building. Um, use is expected, uh, this is gonna be flex use, um, so we're looking at potential for construction trades or wholesale building materials, those types of, uh, uses. Um, in MI, uh, for you folks, uh, the, a lot of uses in this zoning specifically uh, would be looked at maybe as conditional use if anything else were to change here. So if anybody would want to be a tenant in this building that don't meet those specific, uh, criteria, would have to come back in front of council to request the ability to occupy. Drive aisles on here are thirty-six feet wide, we have full, full truck courts behind each of the buildings. Um, essentially just the, we have, uh, spade loading spaces spaced out for each specific tenant. And then we have a introduction of a couple new stormwater facilities to service all the impervious pavement that'll be out there, so. We'll leave it to you guys, have any questions?
Okay, concept plans, so we'll open up for questions, um, or anyone from council, questions? Anyone, council? All the parking on the, on the other side of the building from where the loading dogs are, for the employees, right?
Mainly in the front of, of each building, um, rear, rear loaded truck, uh, docking as much as we can afford there, so. First building, it will be on the top right there, uh, a lot of tree clearing for it, but it's mainly hidden from the road, uh, with all the tree frontage, that's along Industrial, so.
It's behind the stormwork pond right there.
That's right, yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Okay. Any questions from anyone? On Industrial Drive, if you're familiar with it, before you get to our substation, it's where you go up the hill, um, and it's on the left-hand side at the top of the hill, right there at that parcel where you see great big poles that are being stored there now.
Correct.
They'll be removed and these will, uh, these buildings are going there playing on Industrial Drive, so. Um, any questions? Okay, good, Steve, we'll see you next month, right?
I'm staying right here, though.
I'm talking to people to make a difference, okay.
That's true.
Okay, all right, so you're staying right here, and we're moving on to the next one.
That's true.
So we're doing now, um, Fortam Brick Mill Road. It's a record minor subdivision plan for Janey's Way, which has been presented before. It's a twenty-two lot single-family, semi-to-pat senior living, fifty-five plus, subdivision with associated site improvements, public right-of-way and open space. Steve?
All right, uh, again, my name's Steve Wood, Apex Engineering, site engineer for this project as well. Um, as described, twenty-two, uh, simple family lots duplex, uh, this will be senior living. Um, property contains one stormwater management facility, uh, will have a pretty significant road widening that'll occur out on Brick Mill Road, uh, working with Dela. Uh, there'll be a full length, uh, full width shoulder added to the roadway that'll connect all the way down to Brick Mill Elementary where it kind of cuts off. Um, the cart aisle for, uh, Janey's Way itself is thirty-two feet. We have a cul-de-sac in the back that'll be landscaped in the middle, um, it's twenty-four feet wide, but it'll be one-way counterclockwise. Um, we do have a pump station on this, uh, specific property, is this property is much lower than surrounding, uh, areas that are sewed. Uh, sewer will be provided, um, via force me and from the pump station through Janey's Way, not, uh, southerly along Brick Mill Road, out in front of Brick Mill Elementary where gravity picks up for the town of Middletown. Um, six-foot sidewalks, sixty-foot right-of-way, uh, it's generally, uh, so I'll take any questions.
Single families, some might be taxed. We've had discussed it, is the garage actually attached to the building or not attached?
The garage is attached, yeah.
The garage is attached, and that's where it comes up seven.
So they're forty-four units or they're twenty-two?
Twenty, twenty-two, yeah.
So, so let's just look at lots sixteen and seventeen.
Yeah.
You have.
Yeah, we, I'll show you, yeah, sure.
We'll, uh, thank you.
You, you're awesome.
So there, there you go, on how these will be attached to each other. So we'll, uh, yeah, I'll, uh, we'll, um, those are how the units are attached, are planned to be attached, they're floor plans. We'll take a quick glance at the floor plans and, and renderings of the materials you guys will generally see.
So the first thing you figure is, you know, put back, so.
Let's start with, let's go ahead and look at number three there, the rendering, just so you guys can picture in the material. So this is obviously more of a townhome layout with multiple attachments here, but this is essentially what the materials will look like for the duplex lots on the exterior. All right, so this is, this is also what we presented back when we presented the preliminary. Uh, we'll go to the large, number two. So, you know, general elevations here, so these larger lots, I mean, generally the, the houses are gonna be, uh, approximately with their garage, about forty feet wide. They're not, they're not super big lots, but the houses will take up the majority of the buildable space as well, within their structure, so.
And that'll be garage to garage?
Uh.
Of course, it's fair.
I think it's actually, can you, can you pull up number four again, I'm sorry. And.
Yeah, can you zoom in a little further, I'm sorry.
I do believe it is.
Some of them are, some of them are probably both ways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the majority of them, look, is actually like, if they're, uh, opposite of each other, so.
That's good, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, most of those, just, you know, well, it doesn't matter. Once we get the, the final model home, this is approved, we'll come in with individual lines of grades for each of these residential lots, so.
Okay, any other questions for council, uh, before we get a person on the board?
Yeah, the entrance coming in, is that the current house that sits there, or is that the entrance?
So it is generally, yeah, it is generally located closer where that house is now. And it has to be because of the current. And it has to be because of the curb.
Yeah, because the curb going down.
That was one, yeah, that was one of the big, major considerations for location, because of the bend, that was something to work with.
And so the house will go away?
The house will go away, that's correct.
And then the entrance will be close to where the driveway is, single family.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
And no on-street parking?
No-on-street parking.
Okay, okay, any other questions?
Sorry, have we looked at the turn radius at the top, this turn there? It's got one smudge or two on the right inside, right?
Yeah, the one that comes, comes around?
A little narrow there.
Yeah, I have the full, yeah, I do have full, um, truck movement, so we submit those on, with the preliminary plan. So, yeah, the fire vehicle makes it completely around without, there's no concern there. So what we generally have to do is we model those trucks, they're two feet off of the gutter, so that, that's what we have to do.
Is that a rolled curb in the center?
Uh, no, that'll be a, it's, I forget what exact type it is. It's a two-inch exposure and then it's a flat top, so there's a slight vertical, but not much.
We didn't want, we didn't want it raised because of the fire truck issue we had before.
No, yeah, that's, yeah, I mean, that is technically still the same, we can absolutely taper it and can charge the plans, but.
It's just the two entries like we redid at the library.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You did say no on, no on-street parking.
Yeah, especially in that, yeah.
Any other questions, council? Questions from anyone? Yes, ma'am, yes, sir, whichever one of you, and what up first?
How many homes?
It's twenty-two, twenty-two in total, so eleven total buildings, twin, twin and a half. Yes, that's correct, that's correct.
Fifty-five plus of unity, I don't see any place for recreational, either clubhouse, pool, tennis court, anything. Where do you keep that going?
Don't forget, it's only twenty-two units.
I know, but you're fifty-five plus, you gotta go somewhere.
Well, we told them no issue at all, it comes spring milk.
Thank you. No, I'm serious.
We do.
We're Spring Arbor, that's our, it's Spring Arbor.
So, yeah, so by code, we're required a certain amount of usable space, but there is no, there is no amenity, you're correct in that. But the, the amount of usable, uh, open space that's required, we provide beyond that.
So you just buy them a roof over their heads and hope, hope for the best.
This, yeah, we, there is no included, uh, like, like we, like we just said, there is no included amenity actually.
I just think it's poor play.
To make it economical typically, especially for an active dormitory during a clubhouse, it'll be fifty to seventy-five homes.
That's right.
Because the burden on the homeowners to maintain something like that is quite, quite high. Plus the thought is they can just go to the new county park up there on, yeah, Chicago State Park, yeah. Yeah, watch the kids play and maybe the governor will stop by.
Pickleballers.
County will be there, but the vote, he'll be there. Okay, any other questions from the public?
Quick, quick question, um, how big are these homes, one twin, what is that?
I believe this, well, Rick's here, so Rick, Rick knows a little bit more, but I believe the smaller ones were about twenty-two hundred fifty square feet.
Twenty-two hundred square feet, little one.
Okay, and, and the other question is, when you say no parking on the street, who's gonna, who's gonna direct that?
Well, we thought you'd let us know when you run out there.
They weren't supposed to have parking in Middletown Crossing, but, but I'm just saying, is there association, is that what's going to dictate this or is it going to be the town?
It'll be county enforcement, if we accept the street, it'll be on us.
Gotcha, okay.
But it'll be, remember, it's only one way in, one way out, so there won't be many people there just cruising on residence.
Exactly, I understand, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the driveway's long enough to accommodate two cars.
You said long enough, did you ask if they're long enough, I'm sorry. Yeah, so beyond the sidewalk, they are twenty-four feet long, so that would accommodate two vehicles in each driveway. Plus a garage space, I mean, obviously, we don't.
They don't have garages, yeah.
Two-part garage.
Good. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the record major subdivision plan that's just presented for Janey's Way as we're done Brick Mill Road. Moved by Mr. Thomas, seconded by Mr. Chad. Any other questions from the public or anything going forward? There are none, all in favor, six to five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Alright, Rick, good luck, let's get this thing going.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a motion to ratify resolution twenty-five dash ten, dash oh one, to amend the town Middletown personnel policy, four fifteen, Mr. Depp. Okay, I'll entertain a, a motion to accept a recommendation of town manager for resolution twenty-five ten oh one for the drug and alcohol abuse policies, the, or, uh. Personnel policy.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Blythe, seconded by Mr. Royce. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, six to five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next on the agenda is just an introduction of an ordinance. It's twenty-five ten, um, oh one, to amend chapter one forty-five of Town Midletown Code of Ordinances to adopt Article Two, sediment and stormwater management, and Article Three, stormwater management facility, water force and drains, system maintenance. Their introduction of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances to Town Midletown. With that, unfinished business, we go. Mr. Sherman?
No, sir.
Mr. Orr?
No, sir.
Mr. Chad?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blythe?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lewiston?
No, sir.
Counselor?
No, sir.
Anyone unfinished business? There are none, no business, Mr. Ball, Mr. Sherman?
No, sir.
Mr. Ford?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chad?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blythe?
Sir.
Mr. Lewiston?
No, sir.
Counselor?
No, sir.
Anyone, no business? Okay.
Reverend Dick was a difficult one to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Just a simple thank you, when we came before you, the Multi-Pastoral Alliance twenty-one to bring back the Midletown tent revival. We appreciated all the support that we had from you as well as Police Department Chief, police. This year, we brought back the festival park itself and it was a tremendous success, great feedback from the community. But we just wanted to say that we appreciate what you have done, Town Council, and all the support we got from the Police Department, working with Lieutenant Fox, sorry to say it, Captain Davis, the town workers on point at the entry and exit points, it was very successful. So we just wanted to leave these appreciation certificates to the Town Council itself and to the Police Department. Certificate of appreciation, this is an appreciation of the town of Midletown, support of Midletown Camp Tent Revival Festival and Extravaganza twenty twenty-five, October sixth, two thousand twenty-five, Multi-Pastoral Alliance, President Reverend May Dickerson Jr., and says the same thing for the Police Department. And next week, we'll be going to the Fire Department meeting and presenting them as well as the EMS. The EMS actually had to perform their services on that day. We had somebody that unfortunately decided to come out straight from the hospital, but they were there to re, to respond, so we, you know, we thank them as well, so, thank you.
Well, thank you for the recognition and this is now going to be an annual event going forward, right?
Yes, yes, uh, uh, twenty twenty-six, we look at, we looked at the school yard, the way they're, they're, have set up, we'll say already. We should be able to have the whole thing in there and not necessarily, the street blockage is, you know, because of the, the dead entries.
Yeah.
It's, it's small, it's smalled up to where, you know, it's not really feasible to have it there, but the school yard is so, so big.
Well, it's just a gorgeous, so we'll be able to have it out there, no problem at all.
Right, and we look at bringing back the softball tournament, so we'll be communicating with Silver Lake and Little League, see about that.
Okay, great, well, thank you, appreciate it.
Just give this to.
Just give it to Kristen, appreciate it. And thank everybody involved, it was very, very well attended and everything I've heard was great.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you for committing to do that, appreciate it. Anyone else, no business?
Mr. Wool? I'd like to make a motion that we end the executive session to discuss personal matters in which the needs, competency and ability of individual employees handling the matters are discussed.
Um, entertain, second to Mr. Royce, moved by Mr. Chad, we'll end the executive session. Personnel legal matters discussed, questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, six to five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.